Testing. You ready? Meeting, call to order Wednesday, the 18th, October, 2023. Commissioner Ramirez, can you be in the presence of the agents?
Yes, please rise, put your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here, present.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Present.
Commissioner Morillo?
Present.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Present.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Present.
So, we have Commissioner Arbe Su absent.
Okay, going next, going on to the next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any item being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda.
No, no request from staff.
Okay, approval of the minutes, the planning commission meeting, October 4th, 2023, do we have a motion?
I motion approve the minutes.
Second that.
Your roll call, please.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Yes.
Commissioner Morillo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Going on to the next item, written communication? Do you have any?
None received.
Going on to the next one, public comments, non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda but isn't within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Looking on Zoom, it doesn't look like anyone has their hands raised.
Okay, closing, public comments, reports and requests.
Chairman, staff has none.
Okay, non-hearing items, the public hearing calendar equation judicial. Going to item number two, architectural review number 23-12, request a modified Panda Express drive-through building, architectural within the addition of a red LED light strip to this roof element design of architectural review number 2312 at 50120 Cesar Chavez Street. The project was originally approved as architectural review number 2112, consistent of developing of 2.83 acres of the 8.25 acre property to include a 2,600 square foot Panda Express drive-through restaurant and a 20,442 square foot Aldi supermarket at the northeast corner of Cesar Chavez and First Street, APN 772-020-007 and 78, 778-010-017, continuing from October 4th, 2023, applicant Panda Express Incorporated.
Okay, thank you Chair and members of the planning commission. I do have a PowerPoint. So, commission, this item was continued from the last planning commission meeting based on some request by the applicant that was interested in looking at some potential options on a field visit to the Panda Express site. So, the applicant did have a Panda Express building approved through architectural review by the planning commission previously, that building is near completion. What we did notice is that one of the red LED lighting strip features was not provided during architectural review, but we felt that it was significant enough in addition to the project that the planning commission should be reviewing it. Just quickly, because you've seen this before, the vicinity map shows where the project site is in the Fountainhead Plaza Shopping Center. And the plan commission did approve the 2,600 square foot drive-through building in the shopping center along with Aldi supermarket. The overall architecture included a new design prototype for Panda Express and with that they are proposing red LED lighting strips along the exterior. Staff did recommend that that lighting strip be view obscured directly so that you can directly see the lighting and that would be tucked under one of the architectural feature and would have more of a halo effect. And I'll show you what that looks like. These are the architectural renderings that were approved by the planning commission and what the building looks like today, front and rear elevation of the building. And then the side elevations, one side is a drive-through, the other side is the main entrance to the building. The architectural suite feature you could see is shown towards the top of the building. They did provide a rendering of what this would look like with the red LED lighting. You can see it in red, the top of the building, as well as the signage proposed by the applicant. They provided some other depictions of what this looks like in other places at night and during the day. And the applicant did install the lighting prior to receiving the approval. So, the red arrow points to where that red lighting strip is. And again, here's the image that shows what that looks like on the front elevation and just architectural detail of what that looks like, their specifications. Our suggestion, you could kind of see at the edge of the architectural swing feature, it's really at the edge of it. We suggest that it be tucked back and moved so it was more view obscured and it would have that halo effect. The applicant did provide a letter as part of your staff report indicating that making any kind of modifications to them would be challenging and would not, would not work, would not be feasible. They also did provide a test of what the LED lighting would look like. So, there are three images of the building and when they tested it last week on a Thursday evening. So, the top two photos are of the Panda Express when they tested it and then the bottom left photo also shows it as well. For comparison, they, the applicant provided an image of what In-N-Out and his neighborhood looks like with the red LED lighting, which is directly viewable. And I think he provided that example to show that it was a little bit brighter. They have the ability to set it on different settings, a lower setting, and this is what they said their, the light is on the lowest setting in terms of brightness. So, there was already an environmental review on the project site and a mitigated negative declaration approved as part of the project, so no further environmental review is required. As far as alternatives, these were the ones that were presented to planning commission last time. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution that would approve the LED strip lighting, but as long as it was directly view obscured, the applicant is looking for approval as they're proposing it, which would be alternative number two. So, here's our recommendation, which is to have it view obscured, either tucked under that feature or what was mentioned by the planning commission, I think, last time was that there would be like a lip feature where it's proposed, that would view obscure it. So, the, I'm not sure if the, I was trying to see if the applicant was in the audience here today, but they may be participating via Zoom. But that's the end of my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I do have a question, so it appears that on the letter of the applicant on October 11th, it indicates that they condemn the light to the lowest possible level. However, they cannot do anything to the curved roof due to the manufacturer stating that it would, it would be, it would cause a challenge. So, are, is this still the same case? I mean, this is a letter dated on October 11th, so are the staff recommendations updated based on this information or did we, because at our last meeting, we asked if the applicant could go back and talk to the manufacturer and we asked for those three scenarios. Did we evaluate that?
Yeah, so this is their response to that and saying that they believe it's not feasible and be challenging to do that. And so, just because it's challenging doesn't mean that it can't be done, right? So, that's why our recommendation is still the same. But, you know, if the applicant's available to, they might want to speak to that, that comment.
Thank you.
Have a question. So, the pictures here look pretty dim, putting that lip over will make them just like a shadow of the red or how will that work?
Yeah, if you did have a lip, let's say it's on, on the top of the lighting, then probably the halo effect is going to be just like, it's not going to be around the lighting, it's actually going to be below.
Oh, like a kind of swerve underneath?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that would be the same case if you tucked it under the architectural feature, you would just see the glow feature underneath that.
Okay.
Did they, did they install the dimmer on it, Gabriel?
They said it has a few different settings for brightness and they said they.
So, they did install it because when we talked to them last?
They weren't sure.
They weren't, weren't sure about it and they were going to give us that information. They were talking about also putting the, what was it, eyebrow over it too, so we didn't have that direct?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we talked about two ways to do that, right? Under the element, tucked back by the wall, or just some kind of lip over where it's proposed. So, their preference is not just to, you know, the original proposal and leave as is and.
Yeah, I read their, I read their report.
Yeah.
Director, is there, is there hindrance for them to be able to open? I mean, these lights can be shut, be shut down no matter what, right? They don't have to be on in order for the restaurant to function?
Yeah, it's not required.
It's not required, okay.
Yeah.
So, it, so they can't come back and say without this, you know, we can't open the restaurant officially, correct?
No, no, one of, one of the things that they're articulating in the letter is that, I guess this is the first prototype of this Panda Express in California.
Yeah.
And then, so they wanted to be able to showcase that and they believe that lighting element is a key feature of that prototype, so.
Right, but again, I think with any prototype, there's challenges, you know, to get it functioned the way that the city would like to be functioned, so.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, so how do we regulate on which is the right setting on the, on the light with the dimmer?
That would be a good question for the applicant because what they provided to us was images that they indicated were the lowest level of brightness and so that's what you're seeing in those photos I showed you.
So, we get some kind of approval or condition for a setting because, you know, once we, we approve it, they're going to turn on the lights full blast, you know, I mean, and we're going to go back to, to the original scenario, you know?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, it would probably be, if you were to prove it as, as proposed, then, then you should probably condition the level of brightness.
I would recommend that too.
Just keeping it dim?
Yeah, keep it to, you know, dim. With the pictures they showed us, go ahead.
My main concern is strictly setting precedent here to a standard operating procedure, right? Coming in last minute and would just go ahead and constructing and installing lighting and putting the commission in this predicament here. So, that really doesn't leave, you know, it, it doesn't sit well with me, right? That, that we have a developer and are a business who, you know, puts their plan through plan check, starts to go into construction, checks all the boxes, then ultimately in last minute decides, hey, we want to do this and then doesn't even shell face, not even one time in the meeting. Not even, this, this, this item's come before this dais three different times, four different times, I matter of fact. And we put, but he pushed it out just so he can be here and he hasn't even shown up one time. And so, for me, that's, that's, he's not, he's, he's, he's not being a good business partner for a community, right? And if he wanted, he's wanting to showcase his, his development to be the prototype in California, maybe he should look elsewhere. If he's done it somewhere else, maybe he should fly his, fly, fly his different business partners or city members out to go look at projects outside of the city or another state, right? Because for me, he hasn't acted in good faith. So, that's a, that's a, and for me, I don't, I just don't want to set precedent and allow different agencies, different businesses coming to this agency and say, hey, this is how we're going to rule. This is how we're going to do business.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure if, if, they may not be in the building, but I'm not sure if they're on Zoom. So, we should, we should check. The first meeting was, was my fault, I want to apologize for that, I expressed that last time for providing the wrong date, the meeting, but yeah, the second time they were available in person.
Also too, you provided direction, right? What you wanted, what you wanted to see from him and he still went ahead and did whatever he wanted to do. So, that's where, you know, that's, that's what I don't agree. He wasn't showing up working with the city, right? So, especially you, you're the director, you know, he needs to give you, give you the respect to work with you, right? And he wants to circumvent that or bypass you, come to the dais, bring it to the commission, right? And really, I, I just, that doesn't sit well with me.
Yeah, they got to work in good faith. I think it would have been appropriate if they would have ordered it after the approval because they ordered it already to, the way they basically wanted it and they said, well, we can't change it anymore. And that's not working in good faith, you know, so I agree, I concur with Commissioner Hernandez.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues, the other commissioners. Is the applicant on the line? It would be great if he could at least, you know, speak to us for a moment. Thank you, Director.
And it looks like there's a hand raised and I don't know if Chair want to consider opening the, the public hearing?
It's 6:20, we're opening the public hearing.
Good evening, commission, can you guys hear me?
Good evening, yes.
Hi, this is Ruben, I'm with the applicant, I'm with the architect's office and Panda Express representative.
Go ahead, Mr. Rodella.
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, so, just wanted to kind of clarify a few things, I know there was a couple of questions here. Yeah, unfortunately, we're not very local, so we're not able to attend today. But I was there a couple of weeks ago, I did meet with Mr. Gabriel Perez in person to discuss our options and, and, you know, what to do after my onsite meeting with, with the contractor, Panda project manager, some operators and also the installer of this roof element. So, I did speak with Gabriel, we, we spoke in person to talk about this. You know, unfortunately, there's some things that, you know, we are unable to, to modify, especially this red LED strip. As I had mentioned before, it is kind of a pre-manufactured element. And yes, it is unfortunate that this was kind of brought up after the fact. You know, we did get approval, building permit approval actually, on the entire system, including this every red LED light. And comments came back after we were issued a permit to bring it into a planning commission. This came from planning department, so this was something that we had already gotten approval, installed it, came back saying, no, it, it's not approved. So, you know, I, I don't think that's fair for, for someone to say that, you know, we installed it without good faith because we did have a permit for this installation. Second of all, you know, I did provide some photos to staff regarding the LED light being at the lowest dimmable level. There is a dimmer, I just speak with the manufacturer, he did say that there is a dimmer installed, so that's why we set up this test to set it at the highest level and also at the lowest level. I believe staff only provided the image with the lowest level, but I did provide a high level for comparison as well. And the high level was pretty comparable to that In-N-Out LED light that was, that was shown. So, we did provide it, the dimmer is actually on the roof, it is not accessible after, after setting it. So, any type of tampering with it would, you know, would not happen. If, if the resolution is to leave it at the lowest dimmable level, then that is the level that it will stay at and no one can really go up on the roof and open up the cavity and it's, it's a very complex access to it. So, it, once it's set during construction, then it is, that is the set light level.
Thank you. So, now that we know all the facts, Mr. Director, is the city engineer on the line? And so, I got another comment quite in a, for, for that development per se. There's an existing communication line that transgress Caesar Chavez? Do we, do we know when, when is that going to be underground?
I don't know when, but it's supposed to be underground.
So, do we have a date? Well, is there some way we can have that line underground like as soon as possible? That's, that's the only aerial cable left to underground in that, in that specific area, right? That would pretty much complete the project or burying all utilities. So, I would, I would want to see if, if indeed we're going to move in that direction to approve the lighting system now that all the facts are in order, that we complete the undergrounding of the existing utilities within the vicinity.
Okay, and I'm not, I know there's a schedule for that to be underground, I just don't know what the timing is and so it may be an issue where the applicant is on the schedule of doing that with ID.
It's, that would be for the frontier, all, all the overhead, all the overhead electrical is buried.
Okay.
But the only thing left would be just communication lines.
So, at the corner of First and?
First and.
To the Chavez, right? Yeah. Yeah, I know that's set to be underground, I just don't know what the schedule is.
I think they work concurrently, right? I think that if, if, if indeed we move in the direction to grant, you know, move forward with lighting, I think then we should, should also complete the portion of the project.
And I guess that's a question for Ruben. I think, do, do, does your team, is your team aware of what is the schedule for the undergrounding there? Is that something that Fountainhead Development is responsible for or are you working with them on that effort?
Yeah, I believe that's part of Fountainhead's responsibility. We were only provided utility stubs into our, into our property, but we didn't do any of the, the greater work around the, around the area, so that would come from Fountainhead.
So, I wish I had more information on the schedule, just to see, because it could be soon, it could be months away.
So, that would be, that would be the only thing left there, right? Essentially, that, that development is the only thing in construction currently and it doesn't seem like they're moving on, on, on that communication line, right? Aldi's is done, working, that's the only thing left that I believe has a permit?
It has a permit, yeah, Circle K is in plan check right now.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the time schedule for Circle K, construction time, is it six months a year?
I'm not sure what their construction schedule is, but, you know, I think they would be close to getting a permit the next month.
Okay, because we could.
Continue the item?
Well, I mean, continue the item or make sure when they get, these get started on the next phase, that, you know, that things are addressed, you know, that low voltage is, is underground.
Yeah, and then, you know, some good information might be to have here is, and maybe Ruben can provide the information, what is your opening date?
October 20, 30, 11?
I think they said at the end of the month.
At the, at the end of October?
Yeah, end of October is what I heard.
Okay, so, you know, a few things, I know they do want to open up soon, you know, I know that's not a requirement for them to open, but I know in the letter, they indicated end of October.
So, that wasn't part of your condition of approval for, I'd say it's end of October.
So, just to confirm what Ruben shared with us, the renderings that they were approved, it included this red lighting. That, that, that's what he shared, right?
You know what?
They did not.
I can't, I can't recall if that was part of the.
That's why I'm confused because we're obviously talking about other things, but I want to come back to the lights. My, my thing is, was, the statement that Ruben made, is that factual within what was approved to build the building?
I don't know 100% right now without checking back at the, the building permits on it, but what was presented to the architecture, through architectural review, the planning commission did not include the red light, lighting?
That's through what the documents you have.
Correct.
All right, but Ruben might have something else.
So, architectural review would provide like the elevations that you saw and it would, you know, that should detail things like LEDs, LEDs strip lighting and then through plan check, that's a separate approval with all the detailed construction drawings. And that was, that's, that's the document that, I can't confirm with you if that was already signed off and approved.
Staff is a recommendation approval, so we need to stipulate that the light situation, make sure that if it's satisfactory with the rest of the commissioners, that's the way they're going to keep it and not going to go up there and, and change it. So, I would entertain the idea of approving it with a condition that it stays and they don't go and, you know, flip the switch or move it.
The applicant proposal, but at the lowest brightness?
Yes.
Whatever they showed. What does that look like?
Well, I mean, they showed us a rendering.
Is it, is that, you know, on high or what levels are, you know?
Commissioners, let's pause for a moment, according to the applicant who just spoke, he indicated that they gave staff one with the highest level and one with the lowest level and that the In-N-Out is equivalent to the highest level that, of one of the photos. So, my question, Director, did they provide, did Ruben or Robelo provide one with the highest level?
Yes, through email after I had the staff report written. So, one thing the planning commission could ask is see if Ruben wants to share the screen of what that illumination looks like.
Well, it seems to me that's the one on the upper left-hand side of the, is that correct?
No, it's not there.
It's not, it's not in those, those images.
Okay.
So, Chairman, I don't know, we, maybe I can direct that comment to Mr. Rodella and see if he has a photo he wants to share that would provide more information to the planning commission.
Yeah, perfect.
Yes, I do, I'm, I'm just looking for those photos really quickly, give me one sec. Okay, I have the images available, is there a way to do a share screen on?
There is, yes, so it should be available through your Zoom interface.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Our IT department indicated they probably need to promote you to allow you to do that, so they're going to do that right now.
I'm not able to see it. So, this was the, this is the dimmer setting, the lowest setting here.
that they provided. And then it has the brighter setting which is here. So that is the brighter setting.
Is there a mid?
Yeah, yeah, there is. I think there were, they mentioned there was like four different levels. So we provided the lowest one and the brightest one.
Any recommendations on where the setting should be or commissioners?
I've seen that. I don't, you know, I believe that you can't alter it any longer. You know, I think the best thing to do is, is to decide, is to approve with, with some sort of masking, right?
Wait, repeat that one more time. I'm sorry.
What would we call it less than that shield that we brought in? Oh, the eyebrow. Yeah.
Yeah. So that, you know, maybe the applicant can speak to that. I know one option was tucking it under the, the architectural element, but having the eyebrow over the lighting, you know, was that also considered infeasible?
It was, it, it actually states that on the report from the architect. It's too much of a challenge and I'll set the eyebrow.
Thank you for sharing with us the highest level dim of the lighting for the facade. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Rold.
Yep. One, one last thing.
Go ahead.
I mean, yeah, like I said, it's, it's going to be a little bit unfeasible to, to actually make any modifications to that metal canopy portion just because of the curvature. We did talk to the manufacturer. It is doable, but there are going to be a lot of rivets exposed creating, you know, holes within the structure, possible leakage that might occur later throughout, throughout time. So they, they highly do not recommend any modification. If it isn't approved, you know, we probably just have to leave it and no longer wire it together to the electrical so that it never turns on. That would just be the, one of our options at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roldella. Closing the public comment at six thirty-five. Personally, I think it's, I'm good with just setting it at the, at the lowest. It's up to the rest of commissioners. We can vote on it or.
I agree with the, with the Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez. I also agree with going with the, with the lowest dimming element or level for the facade for that swoop. My only thing is that I understand that there must have been some miscommunication in the process, along the process, but I just want to also reiterate what Commissioner Hernandez stated earlier. It's that we want to make sure those applicants and business partners that come to the commission that, you know, we all are respectful of the process and there's formalities and that, you know, we create a transparent community, you know, open communication about what is the intent? And if there's changes along the way that we consider them, that's my only thing. So it could have avoided all this back and forth, but I will like to concur with Commissioner Gonzalez to go on the lowest level for the lighting and so that we can move forward and, you know, bring something new to our community. And that's what I'd like to present to the commissioners.
I'd like to see, see the, the communication element of the bearing of the line attached to, to this approval. I just want to see the, that whole development being built out, right? So I don't know if, if we really need, if, if we need that time schedule provided by the city engineer when that communication line is coming down and what that looks like. And to see possibly attach it to this, this conditions of approval here for this project.
What was a reasonable timeline, do you think, Commissioner Hernandez?
Well, the
And we could stipulate that.
The overhead conductor, the, the has been down for the past, I want to say since the beginning of the year, right?
Gabriel, I want to make sure that, so is this the responsibility of, of the developer or is this a responsibility of Panda, the Panda Express developer?
It's the same developer.
Because I think that if it's not on their property, they're not, you're not going to be able to condition this requirement on them. So I just want to make sure that, that by putting this condition, something that's under their power and their control.
Is it Fountainhead, the developers? Is that the primary developer? And these, these guys are sub-leasers or?
Yeah, so these, they purchased the parcel from Fountainhead.
So it would, it would go directly to Fountainhead, which is the primary developer?
Yes, because you can't condition something on a property owner that's on somebody else's property. So I just want to make sure that you guys are clear on that.
So it's not, it's not leased per se as what you're saying? It's just an outright sale of land?
Well, that, that condition would go directly to Fountainhead. It wouldn't go to Panda Express.
If it's the property owner.
Correct.
Unless it's leased, yeah.
So we could do that, just stipulate a timeframe that's reasonable and then hopefully be in touch with Fountainhead and and tell them what the condition is to, before they move on to.
The city attorney just said that. Yeah, so no, you can't, so you can't condition them to go talk to another property owner to do something that's on their property. So if it's something that, that it's the Fountainhead developer responsibility, Gabriel would have to reach out to them directly to underground those utilities. Cause we can't condition that on one property owner to do, to do or take any actions on the property of someone else.
They have the last phase of the project, which is Circle K and they're in plan check. So I think we could condition them before they, they get started on, on the Circle K. That's on plan check now.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that, that you guys are clear that you can't condition this on.
Okay.
If it's something that's on Circle K's property, then it's something that you can condition on them.
Okay.
But it's not something that you can condition on Panda Express to go on to somebody else's property and underground these utilities. So I just want to see if Gabriel knows whose property those utilities are on and who was the one that got that condition of approval?
Yeah, it was Fountainhead Development's condition of approval.
So that's the, the primary developer?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's just reach out to them with good faith and then, and I think put something that's reasonable and I think if, you know, if it's reasonable, they should be able to accomplish that before they, you know, once you get out of plan check and and get ready to start on that, on this last project on the development.
We can do that.
Is that, is that fair? Okay, you want to make that?
Do we want to bring up the motions or?
Yeah, yeah.
The recommendations from staff?
Yeah, recommendations and, and then let's go, let's get a vote on it.
And so can you go to the alternatives? So alternative one was the staff recommendation that it be view obscured. Two was not doing that. But it sounded like at least one of the commissioners mentioned they were okay with that, but that with the condition that it be on the lowest setting. So those are the two options I heard being considered today.
Yes. So we have a motion?
Is there, is there, before we go, is there a way to control that it stays at the lowest mode? Like what if, there's no way of, cause she said there were four different.
Levels.
There's like a number, there's a knob, I mean.
Well, you said that once they set it.
Once they set it, they're gonna, they're gonna.
They literally have to go up there and.
And, and, and that's what they're, right?
Yeah, reset it again. So hopefully, once he said it, then.
You can give the director a key, you know, special key, place on him, lock it.
Okay, so. Somebody want to make the motion?
Sure. Well, Commissioners, are we in agreement with the lowest level?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just take, let's vote on it.
Just making sure, just making sure. A doc resolution number PC twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four approving Architectural Review number twenty-three dash twelve with the findings and conditions as recommended to put the LEDs at the lowest, the LED stripe lighting at the lowest level. Did I capture that?
Yeah, that's fine. Perfect. Yeah, perfect. You want to add the condition or do we do a separate motion on that one?
Well, what she added, we would just add that as a condition.
Yeah.
No, but I'm talking about burying the utility line.
The eyebrow metal?
We can't, we can't do that.
We can't do that.
We can't, we can't piggyback the, the communication line.
We can, we can on, on the next phase of the.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, let's get a vote on this. Go ahead. Let's, roll call please.
Commissioner Ramirez?
So sorry, there was a motion and then there was in a second, so.
Who seconded the motion?
I second that. I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murillo second?
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
No.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, going over, going on to item three on the agenda. Sevilla two project, change of zone number twenty-two dash zero five, tentative tract map number, map number thirty-eight five, five seven, conditional use permit number three seventy-one, Architectural Review number twenty-three dash thirteen, Environmental Assessment number twenty-two dash zero six, a proposal to subdivide thirty-nine acres into two hundred and four single-family lots with a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet with a three singles, three single-family residential production model homes with three elevation options located at the west of Van Buren, south of Avenue fifty-two and north of Avenue fifty-one, AP number seven seven nine dash two eighty dash zero zero two, seven seven nine dash three two dash zero zero one, applicant, the Pulte Group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Ron Golden. I am a consulting planner for the city. Some background, I worked for the county for a number of years in county planning. Been working for the city as a consultant for about the last twelve years. Worked on a number of projects, La Entrada, a number of cannabis projects, Vista de Agua specific plan. I'm currently working on the KPC specific plan north of I-ten and we'll have that before you sometime next year. So a little bit of background on myself. I've been working on the Sevilla two project for about a year with the applicant, the Pulte Group and with Gabriel as well. It's great to be here tonight to present this to you. As the chairman said, this is the Sevilla two project. It's on thirty-nine acres. It's south of Avenue fifty, north of Avenue fifty-one, west of Van Buren Street. It's a thirty-nine acre site. It has one residence and five warehouse buildings on it. Historically, the site has been used for agricultural purposes, but for the past couple of years, it's been vacant. You can see on the exhibit, the residents and the buildings are within the center of the project site. It's surrounded on the east side across Van Buren by another Pulte project, Valencia. Sevilla one is on the north side of Avenue fifty, on the east side of Van Buren Street. And there are single-family home developments on the west side of the project site as well. There are a number of project applications that go with this project. A change of zone that's proposing a change from general neighborhood to general neighborhood with the plan unit development standards. The tentative tract map three five eight eight seven that proposes the two hundred and four single-family lots, minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. There is a one-acre neighborhood park proposed along with a one-point-three-seven acre retention basin. The project density is seven-point-seven dwelling units per acre. That's the net density on the project site. There's a conditional use permit number three seventy-two. And what that does is propose to utilize the provisions of the PUD standard, section seventeen-point-thirty-eight of the municipal code. And that is to, again, use those standards. We have included design guidelines in with your staff report as well. There is an architectural review for the proposed architecture, landscaping for the project. And finally, there's an environmental assessment that was done for the project to analyze the impacts that would occur because of the project. Couple onsite photographs that were taken showing the nature of the site. Again, it was used for a number of years for agricultural purposes, but it has been vacant for, I think, the past three or four years. You can see on the photograph on the right, some warehouse buildings that are existing on site. As I said, the general plan is, general plan, neighborhood, general neighborhood proposes seven-point-seven dwelling units per acre. It's within the category, the general neighborhood of seven to twenty-five DU per acre. The zoning existing is general neighborhood and proposed is adding the PUD overlay onto the site. This is an example of the tract map three eight five seven seven. It shows the proposed layout. The two hundred and four single-family lots, minimum lots size of five thousand square feet. Most lots are fifty by one hundred feet, fifty feet wide, one hundred feet in length. There's a one-acre neighborhood park within the site and a one-point-three-seven acre retention basin kind of on the southeasterly portion of the site. This is the site plan showing the three elevations and floor plans that are proposed. The plan is evenly split between a plan one, a plan two and a plan three. Plan one is shown in tan. Again, sixty-eight homes are proposed within the plan one elevation floor plan. Plan two shown in green. Another sixty-eight plan two homes are proposed. And then in blue are sixty-eight plan three homes. I'll get into more detail on those homes and what the sizes are in just a minute. Again, they're proposing three architectural models, a transitional Spanish, desert contemporary and a prairie. Plan one includes nineteen-hundred-and-fifty-nine square feet of floor area. Floor area is a one-story, three-bedroom, two-bath home. Plan two is a two-story, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath home with twenty-four hundred and four square feet of floor area. And plan three is a two-story home, a three-bedroom, I'm sorry, a five-bedroom, three-bath residence with twenty-eight, twenty-four square feet of floor area. All elevations include stucco, concrete tile roofs, garage door windows are optional, scored stucco accents, recessed lighting, coach lighting and panel front door and garage door. The design review on this project found that the project is consistent with the residential design standards that the city recently adopted. This is a little bit more of an example on the plan, plan one elevations, showing the three different elevations that are proposed. Each are, of the sixty-eight homes, there are thirty that have a minimum rear yard setback of fifteen feet rather than the required twenty feet in the G N zone. And that's where the PUD standards allow for a reduction in the, in the rear yard from twenty feet to fifteen feet. Plan two, again, it's a two-story, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath home with the two hundred, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-four square feet of floor area. Again, on the screen, you can see those three different elevations. And plan three, two-story, five-bedroom, three-bath home with twenty-eight, twenty-four square feet of floor area. And again, you can see those three elevations on the screen. These are the project entryways that proposed off Van Buren. There are two proposed, a northern entry and a southern entry. One thing I wanted to point out is that the fire department recently, last December, adopted a technical policy that changed the width of the entryways. And so what you see on the right-hand side is a cross-section of the project entryways. Fire department went from a fourteen-foot street to one street being fourteen feet and the other being twenty-four feet. If you have an unguarded center median. That was a kind of a surprise we encountered about a month ago. The applicant revised the street section for those entryways. What that might do is change the lots adjacent to the entryway instead of a ten-foot setback. They may have to go to a five-foot setback. That would affect three lots, two on the northern entry and one on the southern entry. You can also see on the left-hand side, a cross-section, an example of the entryways. There'll be a six-foot median landscaped and pavers are proposed at the entrance from Van Buren Street into the project site. Van Buren Street, spent a lot of time on Van Buren Street to, to make sure that it was going to be an enhanced design. We increased the right-of-way of Van Buren from ninety-four feet to ninety-nine feet. You can see on the cross-section on the right, we've got a large area adjacent to the block wall for a multi-purpose trail. We've got a equestrian split rail fence that will separate that equestrian trail from the sidewalk. And then you've got a landscaped parkway and then the street. Also proposed on Van Buren Street are two medians that will be constructed along with Van Buren Street. There will be a project entry sign at each of the entryways and on the right-hand side is a wall and fence plan. The treatment on Van Buren Street will be a split, split-faced block wall with pile asters every fifty feet within the project itself. They're using block walls for all side yard, rear yard fencing. Retention basin will be fenced with a wrought iron fence. Each front yard gets landscaped with one specimen tree along with a number of shrubs and ground cover. And plant pallet proposed is on the right-hand side, typical of your desert landscaping. As I mentioned, there's a neighborhood park that's about an acre and they're proposing that be maintained by an L L M D. that be maintained by an L L M D. Will include a turf basketball court, lawn area with cornhole picnic tables, and a desert garden area, and we condition that the park will be constructed prior to the issuance of the hundred-and-first occupancy permit. So about halfway into the project, the park has to be completed. There's also a one-point-three-seven acre retention basin at the southeast portion of the site. You can see an example of what's proposed there. It'll be primarily native species, again, very passive in nature, what's proposed on that retention basin area. We had an environmental assessment prepared, EA twenty-two oh six, in terms of the impacts, determined that most were not significant. Those are listed on the left. There were five that were less than significant with mitigation. The consultant prepared a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. We sent the environmental assessment out for public review, a thirty-day public review between September fifth and October fifth. We got six comment letters back. Aguacaliente provided two letters, Imperial Irrigation District won, the Department of Fish and Wildlife one letter, Regional Water Quality Control Board one letter, and the Morongo Abandoned Mission Indians one letter as well. We prepared responses to the comments received, along with we revised mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and that was included in your planning commission packet. With that, we're recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution PC two-thousand-twenty-three dash twenty-six, recommending the city council approval of tentative tract map number three-eight-five-five-seven, change zone number twenty-two dash oh five, CUP number three-seven-two, and architectural review number twenty-three thirteen, and also that you adopt a mitigated negative declaration for EA twenty-two oh six with the findings and conditions recommended by staff. That would conclude my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Can you open for public comment, please? Thank you.
Yes.
Chair, and then also just have a few comments.
You want to give your comments first, or?
Um, yeah.
Is that okay?
You can go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just want to thank Ron for that presentation. Just a few comments as working with Ron on this. You do see something different with this project than we've done in the past. Ron highlighted the larger perimeter setback that we typically haven't had in older projects in the city. Typically, the perimeter sound wall would probably be about ten feet from a curb. So this was a much wider perimeter. It kind of has that equestrian feel. The city council requested us consider for this project. It does include a public park. Originally, Pulte came in with an architectural design that was a repeat of previous projects, and you know, I know the applicant representative and I had a discussion. We're like, hey, we want to see something new in the city, and so we do thank them for really considering like a new product, right? We believe Coachella deserves, you know, diversity in the architecture that's proposed in the city. So you are seeing a new project, new design. The other is, there is a parkway proposed for all single-family residential units, landscape parkways. So essentially what that would mean in the future is there'd be more of a street line, tree-lined streets within the neighborhood, and that's something that we have had in the past.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, it's a beautiful development. I got a question from Mr. Goldman.
Yes.
Is there, is there a way, I do realize and recognize there, there's a five-foot P U E that's there, and the last thing that I would hate there is for there, for any utility company to place a vault there and take half the backyard of the corner lots there and the entryway, right? And say if they would have put a vault in that vicinity, it would require a notch in their block wall. Is there a provision that we can add that maybe stipulate in the language that the utility company cannot place a vault there? Essentially, what happens to those homeowners, you see it all the time, that they literally lose like a quarter of their backyard to a utility vault.
I think we could condition that.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, Commissioner, if you have anything else to add to that, because I think it would require the applicant to quickly work closely with I D, right, of these locations, even today, right, to figure that out.
Well, typically, like the max pull vault, like the max pulling length of a vault is eight hundred feet, and so if you just specify in the language, they could just, you know, plan accordingly, right, not to place their facilities in or around, you know, that corner lot, right? And that's one of the things that you see all the time where utilities just place, place their infrastructure wherever they just seem fit, right? They just go about placing structures wherever they want to. And here, we can provide some guidance specifically for an entryway that we're, you know, it looks pretty nice, beautiful entryway, right? The last thing you want to do is you see, you drive into the development, you see nothing but notch block walls to accommodate for structures that came after the fact.
I know the plans did not show any of the vaults impacting that, but I think we could add a condition that the vault not be placed on any of the corner lots.
Please, yeah.
I was looking at the comment from Letter D. Is Aguacaliente, do they have jurisdiction on the land? I thought it was Torres Martinez or Al武stein they would have jurisdiction on the architectural findings.
So we have to go through AB fifty-two process?
Okay.
And we notify all the tribes who have asked to be notified.
Impact, yeah.
So we sent them in request for comment, and they responded saying they would like to have a Native American monitor present during grading.
Yes.
So we changed that to provide that there will be one during grading.
Yeah, because we have Torre Local, we have twenty-nine, we have Al武stein.
Right.
And we have Torres Martinez. I know Torres Martinez has a branch that does specifically that.
Yeah, they did not respond. Morongo responded that they didn't have any comments.
Yeah.
But Aguacaliente did respond and said they prefer, they would require a monitor during grading, and we've added that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. T, you want to open with public comment?
Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ramirez.
Can you help me understand? So for the Sevilla two community, the entryway will be on Van Buren?
Yes, there'll be two entries off Van Buren, correct.
Where exactly? Because you have the Prado community, and then you have Sevilla one, and then you have Aventine right across.
They're going to be not adjacent, not across from each other. They're going to be men-block.
Men-block, because that little strip right there, it gets really congested as you take children down to Coral Mountain Academy.
Yes, yes.
In the morning, it gets really bad. So how are you going to, how is Pulte going to?
We, we had the city engineer was concerned about that.
Yeah.
Everything. They did a traffic study that analyzed the traffic patterns in the area. Within Van Buren, they will be constructing two medians. The plans show those two medians.
Okay.
But the city engineer did have comments about how that was going to work if someone was making a left turn, someone was making a right turn at the same time, yeah.
Is there, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, it was.
So that whole frontage of the project is going to be, you're installing curb and gutter and sidewalk and all?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, along Van Buren, there'll be curb and gutter, and as I said and Gabriel reinforced, that, yeah, the streetscape along Van Buren is going to be enhanced.
See, because the plan is to actually widen that whole Van Buren Street.
So if, okay, so if, let's say, I'm coming out of Van Buren, going to Coral Mountain, will there be a traffic light? Is that what you're insinuating, or?
They were not conditioned to put a traffic light in at this project location.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. They will be, again, paying their fair share towards other improvements in the area.
So there is no consideration to put traffic light whether be on Van Buren or fifty-one because that area is getting congested, and that area, I've seen significant car accidents already. So I was just curious, I have more question maybe to staff. Has that been considered to add traffic lights?
So there's some on fifty-one, yeah, fifty-one.
There's only one on fifty-one and Van Buren, right in front of Aventine and that new Sevilla one community. It's a mess. And I, I'm just saying. And so I was just wondering if there's any considerations for a traffic light around there?
City engineer?
Or something. City engineer's not on the line.
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, so it's just a question.
But, but there is no street light proposed at the entrance to this project?
Yeah.
Or in conjunction with the Valencia project, right?
Understood. Okay, that's a concern for me. I'll be very honest. I live within that area.
Right.
And so that's why I'm speaking candidly for my members in the community and for the city of Coachella.
We had the traffic engineer and their consultant look at that very issue to make sure that the numbers were not going to require or trigger a light for this project, and they came back and said nothing is required.
Okay, interesting. Okay. I do have a follow-up question, though. Can we talk about, can you guide me in your presentation where we're talking about design standards for the homes?
Sure.
So.
It's back.
Uh.
Elevations?
Perhaps. I apologize. I should have marked the page, but I just want to make sure, Ron, that, you know, somewhere in these documents that when the house is complete, before we turn it over to the new resident of the home, that it's built completely, that everything's done and set in stone. Is there somewhere we can talk about that? Commissioner Hernandez, can you help me guide me where?
Are you referring to like some, like building materials or what it's?
Yeah, maybe the completion of the home where I understand.
So obviously, like, so Mr. Zong, he's obviously the building inspector. There's an inspector, he inspects the project, correct? Like every step of the way, they, you know, there's a bunch of checks and balances that take place, right? You want to elaborate more on the building inspection process, perhaps?
Yeah, I think that's where maybe I'm going. That would be great. So I just want to make sure that once the home is built and set in stone and they close, and they're under, let's say the person who's buying the home is under contract, and then they get the keys to the home. I understand that builders provide some type of warranties that if something's off, that they can fix it, but I want to make sure that whoever lives in the city Coachella, that, you know, our builders, our developers are fair to those who are getting new homes, that they are versed and understand how to remedy those matters and that they're not being, you know, they're not going through hoops of fire. So if you can help me make sure, understand that, like, if, you know, this is supposed to be installed, that it's installed and, you know, we don't leave our constituents out, you know, wondering what is next for our new home?
Yes, thank you, glad, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm the founder of this building official with the city of Coachella. Yeah, so we will not issue a final on the home until it's a hundred percent complete, and that includes everything from the solar system and energy storage systems that are required, through any finished material that is required as part of the approved set of plans. There's also other checks and balances that are there, so we'll have other departments within the city providing final inspections on these projects before we give any kind of final occupancy approval for the homes.
So for example, each home, so the two hundred and, what is it, two hundred and how many?
Four.
Four, thank you. The two hundred and four homes that will be built, someone from the city Coachella will inspect each home and have a checklist?
Correct. Yes, yes. We'll go through every stage of that home through construction, every phase of construction, and approve every phase before anything is covered throughout the construction of the home. So do everything from underground foundation.
Okay.
Framing inspections and do the combination of everything that is behind the walls, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical.
So they have a form called a certificate of occupancy?
Understood.
So if, once they give you the C O, you're able to move in. If you don't have a C O on any project, whether it be residential, commercial, you can't move into the home until it's a final inspection from the building department.
So there's only certain safety features that, you know, there's a, features that would allow someone to get this certificate of occupancy, right? So let's just say for minor things, you know, then there wouldn't, you would just kind of leave it to the builder to address through a warranty, I'm assuming, right, the smaller stuff?
No, we would have, we would make them complete the hundred percent.
The entire house, yeah.
So what was the scenario? So let's just say someone in Coachella buys a new home, and let's just say the frame is broken, and the, let's just say, you know, the person who bought the home noticed, oh, it's broken, and they go to the builder and they submit a service request to fix that frame on the front door to fix, and then they say, oh, no, that's how it's supposed to be. I mean, someone should have caught that broken frame before they gave the keys to the person who bought the home, right?
Correct. So that's where we have different departments also be doing those inspections.
Understood.
So we will look at it for building code compliance and life and safety.
That's what I thought.
And energy, and then we'll have a planning department that does a lot of the aesthetics to the home.
Understood.
So we will, we would also inspect it to the elevations that are approved, and then have other agencies as well do their inspections and files before we issue a certificate.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that information.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please, Commissioner.
So going back to safety, right, and I don't know if this is a city question or a developer question, right? As we know, and I don't want to get political, but the weather is changing, and we had a lot of interesting weather, and it's going to rain no matter what, right? So when developing these new homes, is the city or the developer responsible for proper drainage within these communities? I live in Tierra del Sol. One of my, my home is one of the ones that got very close to flooded. The house down the street got flooded. I'm the one at the pool where the guy was on the jet ski, literally. And so we do know that, obviously, that this type of weather that is affecting us, when it was, when we were building houses fifteen years ago, we're not taking any consideration that. For now, new products and new development, who's responsible for that? Who's responsible so that when someone buys a, now a six-hundred-thousand-dollar home, that we get these crazy weathers that the home doesn't get flooded, right? And that, and that we're thinking about that also. So I don't know who is supposed to answer that question, but I'm very interested in the answer.
So the developer proposed the tract map, and along with that, they did all their engineering studies that showed what was required in terms of making sure drainage that was on the property was handled properly, was controlled properly, didn't increase anything off-site, and that's why you've got that one-point-three-seven acre retention basin. So that's designed to hold all the water that's coming off that project, and it doesn't increase the velocity coming off the project. So the developer and their engineers did that, and the city reviewed those plans, and they conditioned for what was going to happen within this development. It's up to the developer to grade it, but then the city's going to be out there inspecting it to make sure it's done according to plan.
So do we know that percolation ratio there of how the speed of that water is percolating out of that rotation basin?
We do. I would let David or Jacob take care of that question technically.
Well, that's, this is, we have to understand, this is a hundred-year flood, so.
Yeah, my, I, I.
It's a season of rain.
I understand, but we can no longer understand that this is not going to happen again, right? I don't think, as a community, that was the biggest frustration, as a community member, that obviously we can't control this, right? So because there's certain weather that we can't control, what are we doing as a city to prepare for, you know, a hundred-year flood that happens every three years, right?
Yeah.
And so it's changing.
I don't know when your home was constructed, but the regulations in two thousand and twenty-three are significantly better than they were in prior years. I can tell you that the original proposal that came through had a number of basins that, in my opinion, were problematic because they become a problem for who's going to maintain them. So they omitted those. We have one larger basin to handle the water coming through this project.
So, so just to clarify, maybe this is a city question. So as a city, we are not, we are not in the business of building proper drainage. We're more in the business of building these basins to hold water, just to, just to, just to understand how we're developing the city. So we're more, we're at the moment interested in doing the basins rather than proper drainage underground to drain the water.
So are we talking about like sewer systems?
Yeah.
Yeah, like currently, we don't have like sewer systems.
Right, the infrastructure, yes.
And, yeah, the way the city designs captures by basins, yeah.
Okay.
By basins.
And everything slopes, right, east, west, east, north to south.
And I'm one of those homes that is east, right? So that's why, you know, in the future, when I'm buying a home, I'm not buying a home to the east, you know, I'm buying a home on the other side, right? And again, that's because of experience, right? But a new person that comes in by the houses has no idea about that.
Or, or you just buy it, like, carry the soil to drive down into the door, right?
And a serro, right? So we'll just figure it out. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, can we, can we address the percolation and the type of soil that's there in that area and?
Excellent question, yeah.
Hi, good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
My name is Jacob Zepeda. I'm the engineering consultant for Pulte, for Pulte Homes. We still don't have like a standard condition yet until we go into final engineering, and that has to come from Andrew Sim, the city engineer. So at the moment, like what Ron said, we capture all the onsite water onto the basin, nothing offsite. And then to your question too, I mean, the site is pretty flat. I mean, I think the city's minimum street grade is like point-three percent, so that's where we get that, you know, drainage issues, but, I mean, we try to capture, you know, a hundred-year storm. That's our, basically our max standard that we typically use. So, I mean, this past storm, we're probably seeing like a thousand-year storm, so, I mean, that's rare. So I mean, that's rare, so we try to kind of, you know, add to that. But I mean, our typical condition is 100-year storm. So I mean, we're trying our best to kind of add to that, condition that to the site and see, you know. That's why we have that 1.37 acre basin, six feet deep. So and then we're proposing dry wells as typical for the city of Coachella.
Where's the dry wells exactly going?
It's going to be on the basin.
In the catch basin?
On the actual retention basin.
Retention, how many are you putting?
Two.
Max was?
What was that?
Is that Maxwell?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a typical standard for the city.
100? Is it 100 feet or 80 feet?
80, I can't tell you.
Yeah, they're normally 80 or 100 feet deep.
So what are we doing for offsite mitigation along Van Buren? I imagine that that water sheds north to south?
That was in condition. I mean, we're capturing everything that's onsite, nothing offsite.
And is that city engineer or is that a condition for like standard development?
That's standard development and what the city requires. So we won't capture anything offsite, but they are responsible for capturing everything onsite.
Right. So what are we doing along Van Buren, right? So if we, if we talk about specifically Tierra del Sol, if we use that for a case study, water runs there west to east, right? And you always see sandbags going, coming up or, you know, the city sets sandbags there along 48, you know, as it approaches Calhoun, that entryway there, right? And so all that water coming from Indio, once it passes Jackson, just goes downhill, travels and it comes into that community there, right? And so we imagine if we had, you know, obviously there's no curb and gutter north of this development at that, the commercial, the commercial zone there. But there is, there's going to be some water running down, you know, south towards Van Buren, right?
You have the Riverside County flood control and usually they address the high-risk areas, you know, along the mountains. Because we've never, we don't have a sophisticated drainage system. So all the new developments now that are being developed, they have to keep the water onsite. You can't introduce it into the street. So the retention basins and.
Right, but for everything that, everything that's flowing off of Van Buren headed towards 51, right? So as you pass 50, the waters, you know, water's coming down. It's either going to, it's either going to go into the development or continue, so.
It's supposed to go this way, it's supposed to go east because that's the lowest point of the valley.
Right, but they're at where the development and that, it's going to slope south.
Yeah.
Towards, towards 51.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, the water's flowing south towards 51. So like in the build-out scenario for recent developments, like all developments should be capturing their own retention. Like problems happen when we're capturing water from older developments or from north from Indio. And so, so that would require a separate solution than what we would require Polte to accommodate. And so the city would have to look at a solution, right? So sometimes cities will purchase property to create, you know, retention to deal with those problems. But a lot of times that doesn't get placed on the developer.
Right. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful development. Want to congratulate Polte for, you know, stepping outside the norm here and doing, just building this, like proposing this type of, type of development. Thank you so much for working with our director and from hearing the wishes of the community. You know, and I don't know if the applicant wants to speak. But there's another element that I want to address in getting down to the CCRs and potentially looking at how we can better utilize some of those CCRs for ultimately achieving what the city wants, yeah, versus just happening there. So if we can introduce that, do we have any literature in regards to CCRs, Gabriel?
We don't have the CCRs for this project, but, you know, I know some concerns were raised by commissioners earlier about the impacts of buyers that would utilize a home specifically for short-term rentals, right? Or over-concentration. We had relayed that concern with the applicant. The applicant did indicate that they prepare CCRs, covenants, restrictions on their, on their projects. That includes Sevilla and Valissima. And so in those CCRs, the city currently right now aren't a party to those CCRs. So basically those CCRs are enforceable between property owners, right? So there are some sections of those CCRs that are related to how people maintain their landscaping, that you can't convert your garage if it's not an ADU. And there's, you know, another section that, that they have as a template for all their projects that does not permit rentals for short-term purposes, right? And so it really hasn't been enforceable by the city because we haven't been a signer to that, right? So if you look at the CCRs for the previous projects, Polte signs off on it. If the planning commission wanted us to consider the city to enforce any of those sections of the CCRs, then we would need to be like a third-party beneficiary to them, right? That's the only way to be able to do that. So, but right now, the way that Polte, you know, does draft their CCRs, it's really for a complete ban of short-term rentals, right? At least from the past that I heard from the planning commission and comments. I know commissioners haven't been interested in a ban. It was more like the ability to prevent over-concentration, right? So just wanted to provide that feedback because I, you know, I did get some feedback from the planning commission ahead of time with that concern with this development. And then when I relayed that concern to the applicant, they did provide an example of the CCRs that they would look for, for this project. And that wording is actually that no one can have short-term rentals, yeah.
Now, is that, is the process to become a third-party signee or designee, is it pretty stringent? Is it pretty, what's that process look like?
It's not stringent. All it would require us is to be the signatory on the CCRs, my understanding. And maybe the city attorney can weigh in on this. And then there's an enforcement section I've seen on their CCRs that just say between property owner, right? So instead of just being between property owner, who would identify a role for the city to be able to enforce the CCRs as well.
Yeah, and state law does allow it. State law just requires it to be explicit in the CCRs. So if it's not explicit in the CCRs, then it would just be the owner of a separate interest or by the association. And since this isn't an HOA, if the city is not a third-party beneficiary to them or explicitly on the CCR as somebody that can enforce the CCRs, then it would just be the owners who could be able to bring a lawsuit or civil action against the other owners. And so that even goes to, speaks to having your lawn properly maintained and/or your house being painted black? Well, I think that like when it comes to their lawn or anything like that, it would be a public nuisance and the city can also use their municipal code. But right now, because it's not in the municipal code or it's not within the CCRs, the city wouldn't have, wouldn't have a right to any action unless it's explicit in the CCRs.
So Commissioner, if I can add to that, you do have a condition of approval that's already in your listed condition of approval, number 44. We, engineering always requires CCRs for projects. And so those, those, you know, the way it's worded is that it addresses maintenance obligations, including right-of-way, private landscaping, private streets, sidewalks, utilities, streetlights, and their water quality management plan features. And so it gets submitted to the city, gets approved, but the city's never been like a signatory to them. So if the planning commission wants to do that, then it's probably as simple as saying that the city would be a third-party beneficiary to the CCRs.
And now is this a case-by-case, case-by-case as developments come online? Or is this something that we can work towards? Can we work towards this being our SOP as far as becoming a third-party across the board for every new development?
Yeah, so this condition can be case-by-case, right? And so if you want to address case-by-case conditions. So in this case, what I've seen with Polte's CCRs is usually about landscape maintenance, don't convert your garage, no short-term rentals. So that's commonly what you see in their CCRs. But it could actually capture other things that may be of interest to the planning commission.
Does, does it mention your CCR about painting your home black?
Thank you for the presentation.
So before, before the applicant speaks, can you go ahead and open up the public hearing?
It's 7:22. We're going to open up the public hearing. Go ahead.
Commissioner, my name is David Dwyerly with Polte Homes. So yeah, just to touch, you know, based on Director Perez. You know, another solution we kind of discussed is, I don't know the policies of short-term rentals, but there's another way where the residents have to register to have short-term rentals to even keep track of whoever's doing that. And if they're, you know, obviously doing it without being registered, then you can send out code enforcement to regulate that. Along with the CCRs. I mean, we're also open to, you know, adding the city as a third-party to the CCRs as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see that added part, the condition for approval, right? It's the city become a third-party on that CCR to better, you know, serve its community and its constituents.
Commissioner, we could do that. The only thing I just want to inform you, if you did do that, basically what that means is there would be outright ban of short-term rentals in this community. And so it's really up to the planning commission if you want to ban short-term rentals here, limit them. Like, I'm not sure exactly what the intent would be. But the way that the template wording is from Polte and their CCRs is that you can't do it at all.
Right.
Unless, as you indicated, David, right, that if they go and solicit a business license, because Airbnb requires you to have a business license to convert your home into a short-term rental. Is that what you said?
That's correct. And that way the city can control the percentage of homes within a development, not restrict the whole development. Let's say you wanted to, you know, do 30% for each community or something like that, you can dictate that.
My issue with that is we need to add the, add language where, where individuals buy that home strictly for that. So, so, you know, they can rent the home, they can do it through Airbnb, but they can rent the house all year long, right? So, so that's my issue. If there's language that maybe myself as a homeowner, right, I want to rent my house for the festivals, you know, 14, 15 days. I think that's, you know, as a homeowner, that's all right, right? I think the issue that I have with this is like literally my next, the house next to my house is 100% Airbnb, right? That's my issue, that someone would buy one of your beautiful houses just for that, right? And so is there, is there, I guess, language appropriate that as a homeowner, you can make a decision to do that, you know, for, I don't know, 30 days or 15 days in a year, right? Is there that possibility to add that language, not for someone, you know, that, you know, sold their house in San Francisco for, you know, $5 million, buys five houses here and all the five houses, they're doing 100% Airbnb, right? So that's the two separate scenarios.
Right. Well, I think you can still restrict it, like let's say you wanted to rent it out for, you know, just a week at Coachella or something. And you'd still go down to the city and get a temporary, you know, maybe Airbnb permit or something, you know, whatever that language is. You know, that way you're, you know, you're not doing it year-round or the neighbor's not doing it year-round. And if you have an issue, you can bring it up to the city and say, they're doing it year-round and it's really disturbing to my lifestyle, you know? So that way, you know, the city can have control again just to say, okay, this is just creating too much of a nuisance. We're going to, you know, not permit your house to have whatever.
Yeah, so I guess my question is when someone is buying a home, again, I'm very ignorant in this. I'm just asking maybe a stupid question, you know? So when someone's buying this home, is that something that is told to that buyer prior to them buying the home that these are the guidelines of buying a home in Sevilla too? Is that, is that within a contract that they actually sign and are bonded by?
That's correct.
So for Valissima?
And again, I'm just, I'm asking because I'm not aware of it.
David, isn't it when, once the buyer is under contract and they sign the paperwork, then and there in those documents, once the buyer is approved, that's when they introduce the CCRs? Not before, not until they are under contract and they say, yes, you're going to buy it, David?
Right, well, there's the CCRs for the community, but there's also a community-specific disclosure that the buyer signs when they purchase the home.
Yeah, that's what, once they're, once they're under contract, once they say you're approved, that's when then they get introduced that disclosure and the CCRs, because they have to sign off on them. Is that correct? So not until after.
Dr. Perez, I think that this, this one issue here is going to, you know, we should just do a study session because it's going to need a lot more attention. You know, there's concerns across the board and I think that, you know, we're going to need some time to really have dialogue and discussion on this particular issue.
I don't think we're in a position to wait, you know what I mean? That's the thing. We're not, we're not, we're not in a position to like, okay, let's defer this and kick the can down the road here, you know what I mean? That's like.
Okay, so if you want to put some conditions, I mean.
So I'd like, I'd like to see, like, one, I'd like to see the city become a third-party. You know, we have the ability to go in and to enforce code, right? Secondly, I would like to see, like, so since we, they already say it's banned, right? It's not permitted on the development. Well, if we allow the city to do it, then it opens it up to the potentially them being able to access a permit, right? So if that's the case, if one, if we trigger one, something else is going to be triggered. So I'd like to see something like no, no short-term rentals are allowed in the development until after the whole completion of the project plus two years, right? So if they're phasing out the project, it's being built over two years and someone buys in phase one, well, they have to wait, right, until they complete the project plus two years until they can, you know, go ahead and apply for a short-term rental. What happens is like if I go and buy and, like, you know, that's going to be my forever home and I want some tranquility. I want some tranquility, I want some peace, you know, I want to be able to rest, right? Instead of my neighbor, you know, who just an investor and just opens it up and he's, you know, partying every day, right? And so, you know, for me, you know, that's going to be my worst nightmare in coming life, right? So I'd rather see it, you know, where if we have the city become a third-party, we do make them eligible, you know, for short-term rental, but after the completion of the project in plus two years.
Well, I think what it does to us creates stability in any neighborhood.
Yeah.
So these are people that are making a commitment to our city, making long-term investments and want to raise their kids here, want the kids to go to school. So yeah, I think that's a problem, so.
I have a question. How long is the development? Like, how long will it take for the project to be completed or the development of the community? If we estimate it, just curious.
Yeah, so because of the market, you know, it depends on the market.
That's why I was like, the market and also depends on like who can, again, the market, buying homes. I don't want to be left in our community without anyone being able to buy a home or leave empty homes either.
Well, I think, I think what it does too, right? I think what it does too, right? Like, I believe, like, once this stuff is, you know, we disclose, hey, this is what's happening in this development.
Yeah.
Then we really get a sense of who wants to be a community member versus a community that, like, just invest for the sake of investing in a house, whether he wants to flip or whether he just want to profit off of, you know, a short-term rental, right? So it's like we just separate, you separate, you know.
Can we, can we get a legal opinion on that counsel on what the legalities are of actually making these type of recommendations or stipulations?
Yeah, you can, you can put whatever condition you want on the CCRs as long as the developer accepts it. And it's accepted by the city, it's fine.
Okay, perfect. So do we have a motion or?
So Commissioner, just to level set a little bit. So the city of Coachella allows short-term rentals, first and foremost. On the CCRs that Polte has indicate that they don't allow. So if a person wanted to, there's that option. Commissioner Hernandez is proposing something additional to the CCRs for the city of Coachella to be part of the CCRs. So there's two things happening. One where it's like, okay, let's add the city of Coachella with Polte for the CCRs. There's another one where add the city of Coachella and add the stipulation about that after the development is complete, then they can go for these permits to Airbnb their home per se. So there's a couple conversations happening. I just want to level set and be, you know.
So effectively what I'm introducing is allowing the city to govern, right? Is essentially that's what you're allowing the city to do. Right, yeah, to be a third, a.
Partner, yes.
Third-party partner and essentially allows them to govern that, govern this list of rules, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So whatever the CCR may be to enact it. So right now, you know, community members are doing whatever they're doing. So for instance, if you go to Sevilla one, right, I don't know what's going down, what's going on there, right? But there's a good majority of homes are commercialized, per se, right? And so the city pretty much really doesn't have a saying how it's being ran, per se, right? So I'm trying to, we need to find a mechanism to allow for some governance, right?
I'm in agreement, but the second part you mentioned, you indicated that you're proposing maybe adding the stipulation along with the city of Coachella being a third party in this, in the CCRs. You're adding an additional condition. I just want to be clear about...
Yeah, I'm trying to, so the, obviously, the city does allow for short-term rentals, right? Across the board.
Correct.
But what I'm trying to say here in this community is, well, there's a lot of people who are buying for the sake of being their forever home, right?
Correct.
And I'm not sure how they feel about their neighbors. You know, someone buys and their neighbors, you know, just purely investment or they rented it out and/or just wanted Airbnb, right? And so what I'm trying to introduce as well is, like, perhaps the Airbnb clock on this development starts once you build out all your phases, right? Plus two years, right? So you get to, so if it's, if it's a two-year development, that, you know, you got eight phases in two years, well, if you buy in phase one, you're gonna be able to Airbnb in four years.
Well, let's get a motion.
So that's what I want to ask.
We'll get all the stipulations and conditions. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just as a suggestion, I'm gonna read a little bit of the language here for the CCNRs, but it says, "No owner shall be permitted to rent or lease such owner's lot for transient or hotel purposes or for a period of less than thirty days." I'm thinking after, in that CCNR statement, is to put unless permitted by the city. And that would be, and then the city could have a study, a special study session to further decide
Yeah, do all the details.
How the permitting is, you know, dictated. If you want the two years, or if you want, you know, I mean, that would...
I'd like, I'd like to see the plus the two years, right? After the completion of the development, so...
Go ahead, counsel, you had a question?
I was just gonna tell you that we're still in public hearing, so just to make sure that you asked...
Yeah, we'll close as soon as he's done here. Okay.
Yeah, unless you have any other questions?
Yeah, are you, are you done?
Yes.
I have one question. When's the estimate, estimate groundbreaking time? Like, when will we guys start building?
So we're shooting for a start grade of first quarter of 2024, so around mid-January.
And in completion?
Completion, um, two thousand twenty-eight.
It's based on the economy.
You know, there's always the market, the market's reacting, but...
So you'll see your first Airbnb in 2030.
That's what I wanted to ask, yeah.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
If there's anyone on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Chair, can you, can you see if there's more public comment?
Is there any more public comments, David?
If anyone's on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Don't see any.
No, no hand trays.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a couple of concerns. One is that this development, while I support it, will increase foot traffic in the area. And it's already been brought up that it is a very dangerous intersection. My concern is that there are gonna be kids walking to school to Coral Mountain Academy. And in front of the development, there's a brand-new sidewalk that deadens in dirt. And there's no curb and gutter there, because that area is not built out yet. And it appears to be a significant safety concern. Is there anything that the city has in plan to improve the infrastructure ahead of development in order to enhance the safety of kids walking to school?
Question, Mr. Goldman. How far is that, that development, this development located from the, from the intersection of 51 and Van Buren?
It's probably a quarter mile.
Quarter mile?
Right.
So we're looking at, you know, a little over one thousand feet.
Yeah.
So is there, can you, Mr. Director, is there, like, any type of funds?
Community block grant or...
That we can apply for, maybe through an asphalt sidewalk or something? Or perhaps continue, continue, the question fence?
And this is south from the development to Avenue 51?
Yeah, getting a source, and does, does the, isn't there a, I believe there may be a sidewalk headed north from the school?
No.
No, there isn't.
It's on the opposite side.
It's on the other side of the community, it's not on that side at all.
It's in Valencia, isn't it?
Which that, that sidewalk should exist already no matter what, just because of the sureness that there's a school there.
Yeah, but not on the, not on the Van Buren and 51 block, I can tell you one hundred percent.
Oh, no, there is.
So is there a lot of foot traffic from Valencia? You know, kids walking to school on...
No, Prado, on the side coming down.
Which Prado and Valencia, too, in the corner?
Fifty-one and Van Buren, like this.
Yeah.
There's a lot of foot traffic crossing from Coral Mountain, um...
To the other side, yeah.
Yeah, to the other side.
But there's sidewalk there on, on the...
Right, but if they're, if kids live in this proposed neighborhood, they're gonna have to, in order to use a sidewalk, cross, well, there's no good way to do it, because they'd have to walk through some dirt, cross the street, cross the street, cross the street back.
Yeah, yeah.
So just trying to think ahead here, right? I'd like to see the city, if at all possible, enhance the safety for the kids, right?
So is there, is, can, is there, is there a way to work with the school district? I know there's, they sometimes have crossing guards, right? Is there, is there a way to, you know, to get some pathway, right? Like, not necessarily pavement or asphalt, right? But if we can delineate a walking path, you know, yeah, that moves from the school north towards, you know, beyond 51 for a thousand feet, right? Until we get to would be the question trail at this development.
Maybe we could visit with the school district and see if we could share some costs or do something that's safe, that's safe for the students to be walking.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, yeah, I think, I think that's, that's a valid concern. We didn't get any comments from the school district about that concern specifically, but we can definitely follow up with them. The, the final decision isn't made here today, it still has to go to the city council. So one option is for, to recommend staff to follow up with the, the school district to see how that could best work. The other, and this would be also a question for, for city attorney, is right now, the way that the conditions are worded for Van Buren Street, it says that the applicant would construct curb gutter sidewalk and to connect to adjacent improvements. In this case, there are no improvements. So, you know, I don't know if that's in the purview of the planning commission, considering the findings that they have to make, if it was something that might be a unsafe condition for, you know, schoolchildren that live in the development. Is that something that the planning commission could consider as an improvement beyond the site boundaries?
I, I, I would say no, especially because it's going outside of their property again. We don't know who the property owner is. I don't know if it's a private property owner, if it's city-owned, or it's the school district that owns it. So it would be going back to what we spoke about earlier, about having the developer come onto somebody else's property and conditioning that to them. What I would recommend is that, that the commission recommends that staff look into it and see who the property owner is, and if there's any plans in the future of, of putting a sidewalk or crosswalk or anything on that property.
Yeah, because it's not only a thousand feet from Polte to the corner of 51, it's also from 51 South all the way to the school site. So that, that's undeveloped. So it's not, it's probably three, four thousand, three, four hundred, a thousand feet.
Yeah. So what I recommend is, is requesting staff to follow up with the school district. You know, I could see that would probably be something that the developer would be concerned with, too. So we can have a conversation with them and see if there's some solutions that we could arrive at before we get to the city council. That's an option.
Now, does the city have any type of, like, reimbursement mechanisms? Like, for instance, say, if, not to say that we're gonna condition Polte to do it, but if perhaps, you know, we were to condition Polte to do it, is there somewhere we could write the language that there would be a reimbursement mechanism that whatever they spent to make these off-site improvements be reimbursed once, you know, contingent upon that neighboring developer, right? Enabling property going into business? Is that, is that something we could possibly do?
I would say, well, it really depends. It depends on what the city's policy is, and it really depends on whether the city has the funds to even do that.
But, but I think we could look into that. I guess more of the question is, what does the right-of-way dedication look like to the property in the south? Do we have the right-of-way where that transition can easily be constructed? Or, or do we still need to acquire it to be able to make the sidewalk in a, in a safe manner, right? So I, I would recommend, I think, that the best thing we could do is, is follow up with the school district, work with the applicant, look at the street right-of-way, work with the city engineer to see what solution there could be. And, and if there's a solution that, that could be reached, you know, that's, that's something we could recommend, either as a condition of approval before it goes to the city council.
I think, I think the conversation with the school district would, would be positive, you know? At least to start and see what they're adding, if they're willing to participate.
And maybe we could do like a two-by-two or something.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
I'm Bob Melkessian.
Bob, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You raised a great, great point, thank you.
Yeah, I do have one, one minor concern. That is an active agricultural site directly to the south of the proposed development. I operate it. We just want to, you know, future pace ourselves here and say, we don't want there to be an issue where we have neighbors now, and now they have a problem with the work we do. The two that come to mind is, one, tractors are tall, and I don't want, if there's some way we can mitigate people wanting to complain about the tractor driver can see in their backyard, as well as, I don't know, there's no scientific way to say this, but tractors produce like a type of low-frequency rumble that can shake your house. And so, lacking maybe the verbiage to describe this, if there is a way to construct the barrier wall on the edge of the property, if it's not too much more expensive, or perhaps what they have in mind is adequate already, to prevent the residences on the southernmost edge of the proposed community from having those nuisances from noise and being seen.
So what type of sound that was, does the tractor generate?
It's not so much the, like, how loud it is, but it, it creates a shaking.
Okay, so is it, now, are we, does that cascade into building materials? Where the stucco's gonna crack, or what are we talking about?
Well, I don't think it's gonna crack, but we started five-thirty in the morning during the summer. And I don't want people to buy a home there, and the next thing you know, we're out there working. When it comes to agriculture, certain practices have to be done in a timely manner.
Well, I'm sure everybody's gonna have that in mind, right? Like, you know, you go buy a development, and you're gonna see a CCNR and be like, oh, I can't buy a, you know, an Airbnb, but there's a farm here. Yeah, go ahead.
And as a developer, we'll, we'll provide a disclaimer, you know, that what is adjacent to their property. So I don't think there's a way to build a sound wall, you know, because they have pretty hefty walls. But I think just having a disclaimer to our buyers is the best route to go about that.
You're not using a tractor daily, is it? That's just maybe a couple of times a month, or?
Depending on what we have going on, it's, it's up to thirty days.
It's a pantry farm, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a pantry farm.
Yeah, so basically, one day of plowing, a couple of days of harvesting, or?
But it depends, sometimes we, it turns out, and it's gonna move around, so.
Okay, well, I think it's, they're actually providing the disclaimer's evidence.
Any interest in building a sidewalk for, for our kids?
Eight injuries, doesn't have that far down.
Can we have all public comments on the microphone, please?
I'd like to follow up with you, maybe we can get your contact, and then, because this, this idea of a, of a connection will probably need to work with you, too.
Yeah, or maybe perhaps, because the, obviously, the, the street, right, is, is, and the sidewalk there, I imagine going to the alternate right-of-way with, is that correct? Are you building, right? So, yeah, so... Yeah, so I imagine if we were to, you know, add a walking path, we would have to, you know, want to build and maybe, maybe perhaps talk to Bob, Gabe, and looking at the alternate right-of-way.
You have a question?
Just a reminder, just if you have public comments, put it in the microphone.
Any more public comments? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment at seven forty-seven. Do we have a motion on?
Yeah. All right, can we see the recommendation as provided by Mr. Goldman? Mr. Goldman, were we able to take notes?
Yes.
You're gonna have to open the public comment again, too.
Is there somebody, is there somebody else?
No, that's fine.
That's fine?
That's fine.
Okay.
So, yes, I've got, adding a condition about the vent not be placed on the corner lots by IID. We're gonna add a condition that the city is a third party to the CCNRs. We're going to work with the school district on off-site sidewalk, also with the affected property owners, to see if we can make some improvements within that area.
Something that's safe for your kids?
Yes.
And then add the language to the CCNR about the short-term rentals, right?
Yes, I've got that. That basically, it's going to say, we're gonna use the Polte-proposed CCNRs for a period of less than thirty days, unless permitted by the city, two years after the project is completed.
Perfect.
So we're gonna have to repeat that.
Do I have to repeat all that, or am I gonna make the motion?
Just say the motion, and then say as amended by the commission.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to change, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think there was one more, I just want to make sure if that was needed to be in there. Just requiring a disclosure about the farming facilities in the south. Do you want that in there, or?
No, it doesn't have to be in there, because I think that's something that Polte does for all of their developments anyway, so it's, it's fine.
Or a disclaimer, I guess.
That comes up the Department of Real Estate when they get the report, the white report.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, I just, I first, I just clicked out of my...
Sorry about that.
My PDF, hold on, give you that.
Is it on the, it's on the top of the screen?
Do you want to borrow mine?
Sure.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to change of episode number twenty-two dash zero-five, ten eighty track map number three-eight-five-five-seven, conditional use permit number three-seventy-two, architecture review number twenty-three dash thirteen, environmental assessment number twenty-two dash zero-six, a proposal to subdivide thirty-nine acres into two-hundred-and-four single-family lots with a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet with three single-family residential production model homes with three elevation options located west of Van Buren Street, south of Avenue fifty, and north of Avenue fifty-one, APM number is seven-seven-nine dash two-eight-zero dash zero-zero-two, and seven-seven-nine dash three-two-zero dash zero-zero-one, application, or applicant, the Polte group, with conditional language as stated by the planning commission. Do I have a second?
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, get real calm, please.
Alternate Commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Goldman.
Okay, do we have, going on to the next item on the agenda? Information, anything, Gabe?
I don't have much, just wanted to give you a few updates. Um, I don't have much, just wanted to give you a few updates, uh, there is, uh, an event this week, which is tacos, um, chavelas and. Tequila, right? So, uh, that's, uh, this, this weekend on Saturday, so hopefully you can join that, uh, that event, that will be at Veterans Park. Uh, so that's usually a pretty good event, uh, to participate in. Uh, the other is, we had a visit by the Strategic Growth Council and that's a statewide, um, agency, um, that we submitted a grant to for the, um, Transformative Climate Communities Grant. So we did submit that along with, I believe, five other jurisdictions for a grant in the amount of thirty million dollars. Uh, so they did a site visit, um, and they're still evaluating our application. And so that site visit took place at the library today with, uh, some of the community partners, which would be nonprofit organizations, uh, that operate in the city. And that will include improvements such as like urban green improvements, uh, transportation, uh, solar, uh, energy, uh, and, uh, so we, we should hear back from Strategic Growth Council sometime by mid-December. But, uh, if we get that grant, that's, that would be a good thing for the city.
Just a little update, I did a little, uh, presentation, uh, for some, uh, visitors from the UK today, uh, through the Greater Chamber Conference of Palm Springs, gave them a tour of the, the art scene in Coachella. So they were real impressed with what we're doing here in Coachella and the art scene, but it was a fun little trip, so everybody was all excited. Turned out pretty cool.
Cool. Is there a way we can get the study session that, uh, the chairman mentioned in regards to the Airbnb, um, ordinance?
Yes, we're trying to get that pretty soon, um, you know, uh, I think that's gonna be probably in November with the planning commission, so. I know that's, uh, becoming more of a topic with the planning commission and city council, so I, I know we wanna get it on our view as soon as possible.
And how are we doing with our AD, ADU standard?
The pre-approved plans?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we have a draft of the plans and so we just need to schedule that for our planning commission to present those, those drafts to you.
So it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
One-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom.
Perfect.
So, um, I think I might have mentioned before, but, uh, detached units and also an option for ADU conversion of, of a garage.
Perfect.
Okay, go ahead.
Would that feasibility study also consider the parking situation that we've been discussing?
Well, you know, uh, with a lot, there's a lot of exemptions for parking with ADUs, um, so there's, there's a lot of limitations for us in the city.
You have to do underground parking?
Part of?
We're gonna have to start building underground parking.
There's a lot of parking opportunities.
Okay, do you have a motion for your journal, German?
I'd like to motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternative Commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Commissioner Morillo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
Chair Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, everybody, presentation.